For today is a paper.
If everybody could please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your republic, the Constitution, the Constitution and the Constitution. Okay, new business. Um, we are welcoming the crew from Brumtiya de Boses to do a presentation on the Boses administrative and capital budgets for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four school year.
Hello, okay.
Yeah. It does make it a little easier for people who are joining us virtually here. Unless you're next to that.
Got it. Um, absolutely. I don't know where the best place to stand is. So, okay, wonderful. My name is. Okay. My name is Rebecca Stone, and I'm the new district superintendent at Brumtiya de Boses. And there's two parts to what we have for you tonight. I'm going to do a general, um, just a review of Boses and some of the things that we have to offer. And then we have the, um, the Boses budget that we will be doing as well. And before I begin, I just wanted to do a quick introduction. I do have Sandy Rupo, who is our board president. And Dan Myers here tonight, Dan's going to be doing the budget portion of tonight. So, a little bit about Boses. Boses is a cooperative service, uh, and it's unique and it's meant to be innovative. So the services that we bring to you have two purposes to them. One is to create equitable learning, which means sometimes you have situations where you have a special need or a special program, and it's very difficult to do as a single district. But when you come together with many districts, then you can make a program that is, um, something that you can do that's a little more unique. It might be more expensive uh, to do on your own. So the second part of that, not only are you sharing or getting equitable services, but you're sharing costs. So that's a big portion of what Boses does. So there are thirty-seven different Boses across New York State. Um, and within those Boses, there are also twelve RICS. So RIC is a regional information center. And the RIC does everything from bringing you the backbone of your technology to actual devices and services. There are fifty districts within our own RIC, uh, the South Central RIC, and there are two hundred and twelve staff members. Within the Boses, there are fifteen component school districts that are part of our Boses. And we partner not only with the districts themselves, but the businesses, government agencies, and local agencies. When you bring all of those things together, you create great partnerships. Within our own workforce, we have a thousand one hundred and nineteen full staff members, excuse me, full-time and two hundred and twenty-six part-time. So there's a lot of individuals that make Boses work. Sometimes it's nice to see where you are in the Boses. Uh, you are the most northern uh, Bosi, or most nor- the district along the New York Valley. Uh, you used to touch the school district that I was the superintendent and I was at Marathon. So, oh boy. So Whitney Point, uh, participates in a number of different activities. So anywhere from career tech and technical education, special education, so several special education services, um, alternative ed, model schools, managed IT, food service, and duplicating essential business are all services that Whitney Point partakes in. So the other thing that I have for you is the brochure, and the brochure shows you a little bit more about Boses and Whitney Point. So Whitney Point, your share of the administrative budget, which you're going to hear about tonight, is a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars this year. That's twelve point nine percent of your budget. The entire Boses budget, not just the administrative portion. But when you get your aid back, the aid that you're going to be receiving for twenty-two, twenty-three is two point five million dollars. So it's nice to know the, um, the accounting that goes with your district, but also if you look on the inside. It shows you many of the services that we have at Boses. If it's highlighted in blue, that's a service that Whitney Point partakes in. And if it's black, that's a service that you don't partake in. And some of them are duplicate kinds of services, like there's more than one transportation program. And there's a couple of, two financial programs, so you wouldn't necessarily be in all of them, but it does show you where Whitney Point, um, finds the most services or the most use. So the second thing that I wanted to do is I wanted to show you a little bit about Boses. It's one thing to, to listen to someone talk about it. It is another. To, um, to see it. So what we're going to do is there's a really quick video. And what the video will do is it's going to show you all different parts of Boses and what Boses has to offer. Or it might not. Technology is a very interesting thing. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes it works on a different computer because we already checked this out. No, that's okay. Um, but it also is part of the presentation. So other, it did the presentation, was that loaded up into Board Docs?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, please, at your leisure, take the time to look at the video, and it'll show you a little bit more about Boses. We're not going to stress about it right now. We'll just keep going with the presentation, because even more exciting than the video, I have a guest speaker here tonight. All right, so I have Lindsay McQueen. And I'm going to let Lindsay tell you a little bit about herself and why, why she's here.
My name is Lindsay McQueen. I'm in eleventh grade and I go to Whitney Point. And I go to Boses for criminal justice. I really like Boses because it's really hands-on and I learned lots of like trades and what I need to, and the real word, and I talk in front of people a lot, which I'm not very good at, but Boses helps me because I have a lot of experience and I get to work with new kids from other schools, which that's a big part. I like doing that. Criminal justice, I really like it because we do lots of different things. It's not set on like one field, like it's not just police office. It's like you can do anything. And you don't even have to do something in that field when you graduate, but Bosi still gives me the skills that I need in the future, no matter what job I do. Um, recently, we did a chicken autopsy. You brought that up earlier. So basically, we autopsy dead chickens. And it's like, it's a real world experience. We get like experiences, kind of gross, but I thought it was fun. We also have lots of guest speakers. We had one today, actually, the um, the casino Tyoga Downs, their security came, and we got to listen to them. Yeah, both. I really like Boses.
All right, so, uh, you gotta, you gotta learn a little bit more about this chicken autopsy. Because I went into the classroom. We, I went into the classroom and there, there was evidence. So each chicken has some evidence, right? And then each chicken, before it comes to the student, actually undergoes a particular event. Whether it's life force trauma, and you can imagine how that happens. Um, there may be broken front, broken bones, they, it, it. It's very interesting. So the teacher does all of this behind the scenes. And there's this evidence that they, they get, and they have to figure out how the chicken perished. So can you tell us how your chicken perished?
So my chicken, she was in the groceries, she was in the grocery store and she got stabbed to death and robbed. So there was a bunch of stab wounds on the chicken and there was broken ribs. So they gave us like a little like background information about where our chicken was, and we had to piece together evidence to find out what happened. And it was really cool. It was fun.
Very creative, very creative. And, and then the other thing you just need to be aware of is if you do come to Boses and you park, and you don't have a sticker, you do get a ticket.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for her before she, she's released over back into the wild?
Do you share your positive experiences with other students on Bosi?
Uh, yes, we, so our classroom specifically, we worked with a nursing classroom and we all like worked together and it was really fun because we had to experience both, and we get to work with a bunch of people and working together, it's so fun because like we don't know each other, but we still are doing the same thing and we're helping each other solve problems and like everybody I know likes Boses and it's just fun to go to.
Wonderful. Do you find yourself going to school more because you really like going to Bosi?
Yeah.
That your attendance is up because of that?
Yes, and my grades.
Vi- very good. Um, congratulations and thank you for sharing your experience with us.
Thank you for having me, yeah.
I'll say, okay, so I just have a totally different experience. So chickens, lots of chickens we purchased. And we decided that these chickens should have an autopsy done. Which means they're going to go into the freezer. Um, but then all of a sudden, these chickens have like little things like appearing on them, we hung them on the clothesline to drain out. Because you need to get drained out chickens, right? What do you think was appearing on our chickens?
Bugs?
You're correct. It was flies laying maggot eggs before we could get them harvested. That what you're doing is life experiences, and life experiences are amazing. And understanding what is happening in your world is totally beautiful, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, thank you for coming in. I mean, what a great presentation, just, you know, a presence, that's fantastic. Um, I just want to mention that, uh, one of my daughters went through criminology as well uh, at Boses, and she said that when she went forward, so just to let you know that she was ha- so far ahead of all the other students in college that were doing it because of her experience and especially Mr. Atwhistle, that, that, he just phenomenal. So you picked a good, a good thing to be.
I actually visited college and like a couple months ago for criminal investigations and it's the same thing that I'm doing right now.
Yeah.
It was pretty cool.
And it is, it's, it's definitely you're doing college level stuff, and so kudos to, to the department and all this stuff, so. And if you need to, we live in the district, uh, if you want to talk to her about anything, but thank you, you did a great presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, my grandson, my grandson actually went to Boses too. He just graduated last year. He'd walked out of high school and two months later, got a job making twenty-one dollars an hour welding, and now he wants to go to college and become an engineer. It's all a stepstone, and I just applaud you, just like Tom said, amazing.
There's a girl in my class, she's a senior. We only have two seniors in my class. They're already getting like, they're already doing job interviews, they're already giving, they are getting job like recommendations and, yeah.
Yeah, give it up for Bosi.
Thank you. And also thank you because it helps for us to hear from a student.
Yeah.
Um, they come, well, Sandy comes every year. Um, not everybody else has been here every year, but, um, it's one thing for us to hear their presentation, but it's also another thing to hear from one of our students, how much of an impact it's making on you. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
The creativity that goes on in Boses is amazing. Every time I walk down there, there's something new that's happening. And I honestly think that it is best to see it. So if you ever would love to come or like to come to Boses, you can come as a group, you can come as an individual. Uh, we've got wonderful special education programs that are housed in the same building as the CTE programs. If, if you want to watch them in action in the hero program, they're out there rain or snow um, with their big equipment. So you are always welcome. Just give us a call and we will set up a tour for you. So the other piece that I wanted to, to share with you before I turn the mic over to Mr. Myers is what I do. So as district superintendent, I actually have three different jobs. The first is the CEO of Boses, so very similar to the superintendent here. I have my kiddos that that come to me from all the different districts. So it's the education of the children at Boses as well as all the other components that go with Boses. They're in the video, you've got to watch it. Um, the second piece is I actually work for you. So one of my jobs is to, uh, do superintendent searches, to do board retreats or board trainings. Um, if you have questions about things that are happening, or there's things that go, that go on with the state and you would like interventions, kind, kind of not the right word, but assistance back and forth. Then you can ask me questions and I'd be happy to help you in any way that I can. So I, I'm a service to you as well. My third piece is I'm also, uh, an employee of the state, which is always an interesting place to be. But the purpose of that is so that we can hear what's going on at the state level with the commissioner and bring that back so that you know what's going on at the state level, and then if there's concerns in this region for me to bring it back. So I'm the voice at the state level for you as well. So that's something that I want you to keep in mind. Uh, when we get to the very end is my contact information. So if you ever want to give me a call, um, or if, you know, if Joy has something that, that you would like me to research for you, please do not hesitate to do that. So next is the exciting portion of the budget.
Thank you so much. I had no idea I'd be following, uh, the autopsy of a chicken. This is, this is much more riveting. Um, so my name's Dan Myers and my responsibility at Boses is, uh, majority of the management services, so things like CBO, Regional Information Center, that sort of thing. Uh, so, you know, a number of the programs that Rebecca mentioned, and I also have responsibilities for our facilities and our uh, overall financial, uh, health and wellbeing. And so I'm here to talk tonight about the administrative budgets and the capital budget. I know that, uh, this presentation has been done, uh, I think pretty much every year. And I think Al was here last year, I was out of town and couldn't make it. I've been in this job for a year, so this is my, uh, my first board pitch on the administrative and capital budget. But one of the things I wanted to do, um, just was to just share a little bit about what our um, guiding assumptions and principles are around budgeting in general. We have, uh, uh, Boses is a complex place. There are a number of budgets and a number of programs, most of which have to be reported to the state in a certain way. Uh, we have to separate costs from programs and keep, uh, keep costs associated with specific programs so that when we report them to the state, the aid gets calculated back to the school district and, um, and you generate your Boses, uh, revenue off of services you participate in. So budgets have to reflect the, the true cost of operating a program and service. Um, our, our expenditures need to account for supporting our organizational priorities, some of which you, you heard tonight. Um, that our expenses obviously need to be planned in detail, supported by prior year expenses. These are all things that we share with our division, uh, leaders to make sure that we have a clear and consistent budgeting process. Um, as far as the administrative budget goes, under the Ed, Ed Law and Commissioner Regulations, there are certain portions of Boses that are required to be in what we call the administrative budget. Those include the operation of our board, the superintendent's office, our human resources, and our Boses business office. So these are all the things in order to operate the Boses. Uh, they're required, uh, to be in the administrative budget and charged out to component school districts. This is our, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four proposed administrative budget. It's made up mostly of salaries and benefits. There is some, uh, some equipment lines for replacing computers and things like that, some supplies and materials. We have contractual expenses, things like legal and actuarial services. And then we have internal expenses like our facilities. Um, like, um, I'm sorry, facility repairs, that sort of thing. And you'll see, um, this year, our budget, uh, administrative budget is up eight percent. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about why that is, but the percentage increase to school districts is at three point five seven percent. And you will notice that on the revenue line, under other revenue, our other revenue is up um, pretty substantially, and that comes from school districts outside of our Boses region. And that's because you heard, uh, Rebecca talk about our regional information center supports not just the component fifteen, but fifty school districts. So there's revenues, there are expenses associated with supporting that, the administrative level, but those revenues come from outside of our region, as well as schools that cross contract for services, uh, with our Boses. Administrative charges according to the Commissioner's Regulations and Ed Law are, are divided among school districts by, uh, ARWADA, which is the resident weighted average daily attendance. I'm happy to talk about that if you'd like. I do have a slide on this I can show you. And as you can see, based on the ARWADA calculations, looks like Whitney Point's charge goes down ninety-two dollars, uh, from last year.
That's what I like to see.
That's a, that's like, great, uh, this is the, this is a great, uh, way to start my presentations, go into a school district where the charge goes down by ninety-two bucks.
Wow, you missed last year's though, right?
Yeah, I think last year's, did you, did you get hit last year? No, okay. Yeah, I think I was, uh, purposely out of town. Set out here. Um, one of the things I wanted to show you was our administrative budget trends. Uh, we've trended very low on the administrative budget. And comparatively with other Boses I've researched, we continue to remain uh, one of the lowest, if not the lowest administrative budgets across the Boses. Particularly, uh, as it relates to our, uh, overall budget. So on the bottom line there, you can see that orange is our administrative budget. Remain relatively flat, and then our overall operating budget based on growth and services and that sort of thing is reflected in the blue line. As a percentage of, uh, our administrative costs as a, as a total, uh, percentage of our total budget is up slightly, uh, from two point four nine to two point five nine. At least that's projected. All of our operating budgets have not been, uh, fully, uh, developed yet, but, uh, that, that'll be happening, uh, here in the next couple of weeks. Ooh, it's a little fuzzy. It's clear enough. Um, it is my eyes. So one of the things that, that we're challenged with at the administrative level, you know, as I mentioned, it's HR, our business office and central administration. Um, we're getting older and we've been here a long time. And so, um, we've got to start looking at, uh, some succession planning. Uh, particularly with experienced people in our business office. Um, you can see here the, the age of our staff and, and the, uh, number of years of service. Um, we're also getting, yes, go ahead.
Say more experience.
Yes.
More experience.
Well, I'm getting older. We guarantee you that. Good point. I'll add that to my notes for, uh, when I go to the next quarter. Yeah, thank you. Um, we have a number of growing requirements. I know Zachary could, could speak to a lot of these things in terms of uh, state, federal regulations and all of these, uh, you know, GASP, um, uh, Ed Law two D contract reviews, there's a substantial amount of of overhead now for our business office staff. And, you know, kind of struggling to keep up with some of that stuff. So in this budget, uh, just some notable changes. Uh, we've increased point four FTE in our HR department. Um, we've increased staffing levels in our business office. We've reduced, um, actually my allocation out of the, out of the, uh, central budget for the admin budget. Uh, we've reduced our internal expenses and we've increased our revenues from cross contracts with other school districts outside of our Boses region. Um, the Health Insurance Consortium and the Workers' Comp Alliance, we are providing some administrative support for now. Um, we're also pursuing, uh, you know, a grant administration has gotten, if you, you, you know what it's like, if grant administration is horrific. The amount of administrative overhead and grants doesn't, and, and the indirect costs that are permitted in grants doesn't even scratch the surface of what it takes to administer these things. So maybe more support around the grant administration. Um, some rebates from Medicare Part D, these are all things that help offset the cost to school districts. So I guess I'll just pause there to see if there are any questions on, on the administrative budget portion.
I had one.
Yes, sir.
First chart, please.
Yep. This one, whoop, that one?
That one.
Yep.
Um, I don't know, when I was looking at it, I was looking at the very first line for salaries between twenty-two, twenty-three approved. And that was about eight thousand, and then the proposed next year goes up to a hundred and fifty-seven, so it's
Yeah, so those would be
percent higher and one, and I just was wondering what, what drove that?
What drove that were the additional FTEs that I, I mentioned with the business office.
Figured, but I just.
Yes.
It, like I said, I was looking, I thought it was a typo and
Uh, no, so that's the additional, additional FTEs. What, what I would, you know, one of the things that we're challenged with is we, um, we, we can't necessarily project retirements in our budgets. So in order to get people in, we're going to have an overlap for a period of time where maybe we have additional staff in the budget. And then as those people become more experienced, uh, and some people retire, that will obviously, uh, correct itself.
I, I think I just would, I wanted to hear exactly what it was, like I said, I thought it was a typo.
And, and that's, that's also a direct effect on the French benefits.
And just, and just for your information, the two hundred on the end is two hundred and one.
Oh, I think that's due rounding. Oh, so there's, there's probably, it's, it's probably rounding in Excel.
I, I, I did a whole bunch of math.
Did you do that? Did you do, did you have a, yeah, it's probably a rounding, uh, it's probably a rounding error.
I do have a question.
I'm glad you caught that.
That a couple of us, um, were wondering about because many of us have been here long-term and we've never seen the district's South Mountain Hickory on the list before. And we tried, you know, looking it up, and I don't think that we totally understood exactly what they are and never from there. Why their portion is so low compared to?
I can't afford my flag.
It's not, it's, it's forward. Oh, you can't forward it?
Is it this one?
No, no.
Oh, it is.
Thanks.
I think, oh, did it go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go back.
Okay, I gotta go back here, right there. So, South Mountain Hickory. Um, so that is the common school district that, that basically has no students.
I was like, can you, I like, can you explain what a common school district is?
Yeah, I might need some help. Uh, so, so, oh, go ahead.
And so a common school district, it's, it's, um, it, it occurred a long time ago. So there was this one area, they had a group of students that needed to go to school. It's a common school district. They do their own taxes, they have their own. I, I'm also the superintendent, believe it or not, of, of this particular school district. And it's very interesting because it has no house. So it has a number of students that live in that area. And then those students actually go to school at one different school district. So that group of people get to pick where those students go, but they all have to go to the same place. So they're all tuitioned into Binghamton City School District. But because there's still a, um, a district, they have to be, and the reason that you've never seen them before is because I really don't they don't have services through Boses, they don't, there's a lot of pieces that don't happen except for just the administrative charge. So they don't, they don't have any other portion of Boses besides this, this one piece. Um, it, it's an anomaly. It's on, over by Vestal, between Vestal and Binghamton. And, um, the reason that they keep it that way is because they then control their tax base. And it's one of those pieces that if I ever tried to change, not that I would, I, I'd probably be hunted down because it's a lower tax base. Does that make sense?
Why is the first time we're seeing them listed on here though?
Because the person who did the presentation is different. It's, and didn't, uh, I, I don't know why it wasn't in there before, but it's, it's such a small piece of a puzzle that very rarely people even talk about because the kids don't go anywhere. There's no, no house, no building. We don't take care of their transportation. They have to take care of their own transportation, uh, just like a normal school district does. And I think there's roughly fifty kids that are part of it.
And there's very few of these in the state. And like when, if you run for the Bosi board,
you send a letter to this, this district. And they never vote, but, um, they are, they always, I mean, as long as I've been on the Boses board, I mean, they've been on forever. They've always been there. Might not have been on this chart, but.
Right, it was just, it was curious that this is the first time we're seeing it, and so we were curious.
I love the fact that you go through this and you pay attention. This is wonderful.
That's our job.
Oh, I know it is.
They had some key findings in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two that they're approximately thirty-two percent or fifty-three thousand, they had like a surplus bond because the treasurer didn't do their work right, and they like, like they had this report and they had this finding, and I'm like, what in the world is going on? And now we're just finding out about this?
So they just went through a comptroller audit, just like everybody else does.
Okay.
So the, the district went through a comptroller audit. Part of the finding was, um, a, a So the the district went through a comptroller audit. Part of the finding was um a a an error in what the treasurer was doing. So that was part of the the audit. The other part was, they said that they had too much of a um. Um, a reserve. But the problem with South Mountain is that when they pay their taxes, they pay so little, four percent. I think would be like it was a couple thousand dollars. So if they had a special education student that moved into South Mountain. They're still responsible for paying all the special education costs. But if they do four percent of their budget, which is tiny, they would never be allowed to. The to uh they would, they wouldn't have the funds to do that. And then partway through the year when someone moved in. The residents would then have to pick up the.
Right, okay.
The um amount. So they they they're um. Not, uh, you don't argue with the state comptroller. However, they're not going to change their practice because if they do change their practice. As a taxpayer, you might get a bill in the middle of the school year that says now you have to pay this much more. It's just a very unique school district. Um, they don't have to do capital projects. They don't have to do any of those things, but they do have to. Account for their children and they have to get them to school and they have to pay for school. Yep.
Free base.
Yep, yep. And the special ed tuition is a little bit more when they do that. So that's what that is.
Quite a racket.
I grew up in Binghamton. That's a very expensive area up in there. So that's that's I can see why.
Like the housing prices if their taxes are low, right?
I went to North High and we ran up track up there and we're running through there with rip clothes and we're going through tennis courts and pools and all that stuff. So I know where that is. Definitely.
Yeah, so they have quite a deal.
Uh, they know what they're doing.
Not this book was for a long time.
Yep.
Is quite an interesting fact. I think there was a forgotten child for a long time. Forgotten child that was getting some money that we were all sort of helping with. I didn't want to superintendent another school district either until I had it, so.
Thank you for that question. So duly noted.
Well, a couple of us were talking about it before the board meeting and it's like, yeah, we should ask.
Yeah, thank you. So now we've got the old.
We actually read.
Rounding. Duly noted. Thank you. Okay, so on to the capital budget. So our capital budget um. Is also covered under ed law and the commission regulations in terms of what's uh can be covered in that budget and how that's paid for. Uh, this includes uh district classroom leases, which we're not anticipating any change to. On twenty three, twenty four. It also includes our lease facility. So we have an office for our central business office. We have Motor Avenue that houses our document services. Uh, we've got space in Washington Avenue that houses our business office. And um the lease facilities, those are a traditional uh leave, commercial lease. That all are adjusted based on consumer price index. And so that's why you see a change there. It's not not additional square footage or anything like that. It's literally the consumer price index. Being reflected in the lease facility increase there. And then the dormitory authority is our. Uh, the twenty three, twenty four is our final payment on um. A bond from the addition that was put on BOSI's uh twenty years ago. And so uh you know, we're currently working on uh some capital project stuff that needs to be done. We have some significant facility issues that need to be addressed. And uh we're hoping to be able to leverage that going forward, but this would be our final year of the payment on the dormitory authority. Uh, that nets out at three point five six percent. And I do see South Mountain Hickory on capital also. So it it is reflected in the capital budget. Uh, as well as the administrative budget, and I believe that's. Basically, if you were to look at those commission regulations on the bottom, the sorry ed law and the commission regulations on the bottom. Uh, we are required to charge uh South Mountain Hickory. Um, twenty three hundred dollars or so. Again, Whitney Point on the capital, based on the our Wada is uh is down eighty six dollars. On our total capital budget. I did include uh some information about our Wada. I had a question about that at the superintendent's meeting when I uh talked about this a few weeks ago. In terms of how our Wada is calculated, because it's not the same as your enrollment. Um, and it is based on, uh, it's used essentially to cal- to calculate uh. Capital and administrative charges and um except uh in districts that use millage. So that is basically calculated and provided to us in the late November timeframe by state ed and it's based on data reported uh through. Your attendance uh claim through this uh state uh reporting system. Our Wada trends in our region. Um, as you can see, I know this is a little couple to see. I think, I know I can't get too close to this uh. Owl, um, obviously from fifteen sixteen down to twenty three, twenty four, we're. Gone from thirty three thousand, seven hundred students to about twenty eight thousand and change there. So obviously it's going down. The the percentage. Is adjusted every year based on that. So your percentage can vary. It's not something we control or you control. It's just the percentage of the total. We have to utilize a percentage of the total and that's where you see the twenty three, twenty four. Uh, share and the percentage uh share calculated there. So some districts go up more than others, some go down more than others. It's just a matter of. What, how that nets out is your total percentage of um your portion of the administrative capital budgets. And I. I would really like to bring you back up here to talk more about uh your experience of BOSI's. This is more exciting. Are there any other questions? There's there's Rebecca's contact information if you. If you don't like my presentation, you can, you can reach out to Rebecca right there and I don't know. Yeah, that's nice. Nice, easy story. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our percentages. I mean, there's some school a lot lower. How's the percentage rated? Like, how's our percentage?
It's the, it's the total number of students in the region and what your percentage is of that total.
Okay, thank you.
Is how it calculates.
That's why, because our students have decreased a lot over the years. We're better than other districts. So that's why I was curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
But again, remember it's not, it's not students giving them, you know, secondary versus primary, special needs versus non-special needs. Depending on what your tie is. Backing up to two, not just the actual number of students. So the special needs are really in the end in there. Okay, thank you, Sammy. Appreciate that.
Does the board have any other questions?
This, this was pretty nice too.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of us have been on the board a long time and I appreciate what what's been done differently this time. So thank you.
Well, this is Rebecca. I I have.
I'm saying it as a whole and I'm trying to put it down. I'm I'm saying that this is, this is impressive. I know there's training costs involved with this, but. But what I, but I, it's it's nice because it's it's definitely specific. So I appreciate that very much.
What, what programs were participating in, which is really good to see.
And changing things is never bad to include new and different information. It gives us different ways of looking at things. So thank you.
I I'll just add in real quick that I have three children that all have graduated and I wanted to go down to BOSI's, but when COVID hit. They all went through and they all did different programs there and I can say without a doubt that it definitely greatly increased their uh. Productivity and and the way they did things in college. Um, and they're all in different things and. They were all outstanding. So and I know things that I know my children haven't been involved with, but I know our students have. It it's, you guys do a nice job and and the way the students come out is just. Our money's in good hands. So we appreciate that very much.
Well, you send us wonderful children, so I love them. Well, and the fact that I think for a long time, I I'm open for a member's like. BOSI's was sort of thought of as. The children can't make it academically and I always felt that was wrong. It was totally wrong. Children need to be able to explore what they are good at. And they need to go and do what they are good at. And a bachelor degree in college doesn't make them better human beings. And that is what we teach our children. And I just want to say thank you.
Well, it's interesting the number of students that go to BOSI's who also keep going. Well, yeah, yeah. And do their two year, their four year. Yep. There's a lot out there and I I think it gives them opportunity to find their passion.
Yeah, even my grandson right now, he's like, well, I don't want to make only fifty thousand dollars a year. Do you think I could use this? And I said, have you looked at random engineers? And he's like, okay, let's start, let's start putting applications in. And you're exactly right. They need that little. But and working in higher ed, I've seen so many students fail because parents push them in a way that they're not ready to be doing yet. So I just appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you very much for coming again and and giving us all the information.
Very, very.
Yeah, they have really good passport out there.
And you notice she's not sharing.
Thanks very much.
Okay, um.
We named her Pat. I love it.
Okay, we do have a need for an executive session. Um, so I'm going to recess the public meeting at six forty four. And we're going to have discussion on contractual. May have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Chris. And a second?
One second.
Thank you, Brian. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah.
Any abstain?
I actually, I think that one's mine because I handed mine to Kathy.
Approved policy number seven, five, one, one, immunization of students for first reading for removal. May have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Chris. And a second? I heard Tiana. Um, any questions or comments?
So this policy, um, again, it's, you know, a long list of things that when we put something in writing, it ends up being wrong. Because it's changed and this is here state um law is health guidance and actually the immunization rules change pretty frequently now. Um, but. This policy lists things that are no longer permitted. It is something that we just have to do. It's, I mean, having it as a policy makes it seem like we're deciding that this is what we're gonna do, but it's it's not even up to us. So um, the recommendation would be not have this policy, just follow the laws. You know, we definitely have something that's outdated or make it seem like we're the one instituting this.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, approve policy number seven, five, one, one point one, request for religious exemption from immunization for the first reading for removal. May have a motion? I heard Kathy and I hear you, Brian.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this policy is completely wrong. There is no more religious exemption. So it needs to be removed. The only way you can get exemption now is for a medical.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, approve policy number five, seven, six, zero, qualifications of bus drivers for second reading. Oh, yes, we did move to second reading, sorry. Um, may have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana.
And so this is when we reviewed, we had a week, uh, we had a week, a few meetings because it wasn't thirty days, but um. This is just updating the system of votes.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approved policy number eight, one, one, zero, curriculum development, resources and evaluation for second reading. May have a motion? Thank you, Ken. And thank you, Chris.
So this policy um is the one that we are supplanting the Whitney Point one for the Erie one. Which was more more thorough. And the next item, the eighty three, forty is the removal because it's inside of the eighty one tech policy. So you removed it out of one policy and then made it its own base. Erie one provided one that incorporated all of that. It was just better worded than the one we got and we had.
Okay, so instead of having two policies, we're moving it down to one that's more comprehensive.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, and approve policy number eight, three, four, zero, textbooks, workbooks for removal. May have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Tom. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. And again, as Shannon just said, this one is now incorporated into the one that we just approved.
It'll be cheaper if we have more books.
There you go.
Still like one.
I love that.
I think it's safe to say that I love books too.
I think you're flattered.
Huh?
I think you're a little spiner on that.
A little biased? Yes, yes, I am. But that was why I took the job. It's because I love books.
You worked with books before that too.
Yes, I did. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve policy number one, two, five, one, voting machines for removal. May have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second, second. Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments?
Well, you may remember last year, this this was our policy. This was not policy. We were not following this for many years. So it's wrong. Um, but again, it is very strictly outlined in education law and what we can do, can't do. I, you know, having, having the policy. Like this, in either direction, saying we do use voting machine or don't use voting machines is very likely to get outdated very quickly. Um, we're gonna have a conversation about voting machines soon, but um. There there's really no reason to have this. And and now, for a long time, it's been wrong.
Yep. It's it's again, it's something that gets updated by the state so frequently that why have to revisit it so often? If it's already. Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Brings us to comments from the public. Oh, duh. Sorry, I'm thinking commendation. Sorry about that. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our. Community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions, concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. Ms. Black will be keeping track of questions and make sure that they are passed to the appropriate person or persons. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that our, that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community. Can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. The board will now entertain public comments. Each individual speaker is allowed in three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Please state your name and residency before you begin. And I also want to comment that there is a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. Um, so if you don't have anything at the moment, there will be another opportunity later. Now, that being said, is there anybody who would like to make any comments this evening? Okay. Now we go to commendations. Thank you. Okay, and we'll start with, um, Mr. D'Imperio, uh, Mr. McAllister and the TRA fourth and fifth grade chorus and sixth grade chorus and band for a successful festive winter concert held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. That was very, very well attended. Um, Mrs. Belanger and the high school transitional skills class for making it darn it dolls for the community organization, it's raining lemonade, which were included in gift bags donated, uh, to Meals on Wheels recipients. Miss Federov, Ropitz and the CEA first graders for their wonderful holiday concert held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Pollan and members of the TRA and high school bands for their Christmas wins tour of the district on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Whitney Point High School athletes Brenna Bow, Genevieve Houston and Lena Jordan for being selected by Press Connects for the twenty twenty-two Elite Fall All-Star Teams List. Whitney Point students for writing letters to Santa for the Macy's Department Store, resulting in a Macy's donation of close to one thousand dollars to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Ms. Minor and Mrs. Stanley for creating an eight-week writing club to provide an avenue for interested students to grow their writing skills. Children's books on, children book, children's book author Sarah Weeks met with the students via Zoom three times and in person during their final session. Also, we would like to, from the addenda, um, commend, uh, Mrs. Dean, Jennifer Dean and Mary Knapp for acceptance into the prestigious New York State Master Teachers Program. And also, I'd like to point out the art display right behind you. Um, we thank all of our art students for their creativity and sharing that at this at every meeting.
What you can do with cardboard, I love it.
They're all great. I was drawn right to the penguin. It's like, I, I, that's gonna come home with me.
They are pretty cool.
Okay, there is no old business. New business brings us to the high school presentation.
We don't wanna get it near the.
Okay, thank you. So, um, tonight, I know that I, here's my, here's my earnest intention to keep this to ten to fifteen minutes. Okay, all right. So, um, tonight we are, Ms. Berdick and I are, um, presenting the board with a snapshot or an overview of kind of what's happening in the high school, what's happened so far this year, since obviously we're brand new. Um, what directions we're headed in as well as some current celebrations of of events that are, that have happened recently or are, um, ongoing. I do wanna point out that obviously our district vision is to be a community of excellence achieved through a commitment to high performance morale and improvement, and that really does guide everything we do, as does I'm afraid to keep pressing the button. Thank you. As do the, um, four critical questions that guide our work. This really, you know, thank you to Mr. Sweeney for, uh, Ms. Burns and Mr. Sweeney going at the last board meeting and presenting because he really talked about the guiding coalitions and the guiding coalition plus meeting. And we have that same structure in place here at the high school, so we've also had those meetings. So I didn't wanna spend a ton of time talking about that infrastructure, but I will talk about some of the, um, outcomes of those meetings. Uh, one of the things though that Ms. Berdick and I, um, make sure we look at, uh, everything that we do in the high school through the lens of the four critical questions that really, um, drive our work. What do our students need to know? They're all, I'll label number one, I swear they're. What do our students need to know? How will we know when our students know it? How will we respond when our students don't know it? And how will we extend the learning for our students who do? And so that isn't just a sign on our wall that really does guide, um, our interactions with our teachers. And when we do our observations for our APR, we have these, uh, we ask these questions in our, uh, pre-observation conferences and then follow up with them in our post-observation conferences. So not only are we, um, looking at everything that we do through these questions, our teachers are too. Um, having said that, our building goals, and these were, um, arrived at from our guiding coalition plus meeting, which was all of our department heads along with, um, a student representative, a, um, parent representative. And, thank you, turning it on makes it work. Um, a parent representative, a student representative and, um, a, uh, member from, um, a different union other than just the teachers. We have a support staff member who is also part of our guiding coalition plus. So we met in September and out, out of our district goals, we created our building goals. So the four district goals were raising the ELA scores, raising the math scores, raising the graduation rate and decreasing chronic absenteeism. So the two that were particularly pertinent for us were increasing our graduation rate and we wanted to frame it in a positive way. We wanted to increase daily student attendance by at least five percent. Now, the italics at the bottom on this slide is really when Deb and I, um, discussed the slide deck and and how things are going, we really wanted to make sure that we prefaced it with our overarching administrative goal is that we're in year one of building relationships, right? So we're building relationships with staff, we're building relationships with students, we're building relationships with each other and with our fellow administrators. Um, and with the board and with our bosses. So really, building the relationships are the key foundational aspect. And so to grow that trust so that we can all collectively function at our highest capacity is something that is never far from our, from our mind. Look, I'm gonna try it and it's, oh, and it's gonna work. Um, some of you may know that, um, in the summer, so I started, it started in July and in August, there was, um, an email thread about, that came about through Dr. Whittall and a member of the Whitney Point Rotary Club letting us know about this opportunity that was happening at SUNY Portland. Um, and it was the Next Generation Leadership Summit. And in fact, the Whitney Point Rotary sponsored thirteen of our students for which we are super, super grateful to attend a, um, day-long, um, presentation and workshop. It was one day in October and it's gonna be one day in March. So we had a cross-section of nine through twelve students. We had, um, thirteen students in total. We had two teachers, Amanda Burns and Rebecca Malloy, took the students, accompanied them to SUNY Portland where they spent the day working with students in other districts. With the goal, and the goal here I want you to know is, is what the group came back with. And so this was sent to me from the students. The goal, um, that they decided to work on because they're gonna present in March on this goal to try to get underclassmen more involved and to increase communication between upperclassmen and underclassmen. Seniors and juniors feel, oh, this was, sorry, should be, should feel, um, seniors and juniors feel a disconnect from freshmen and sophomores. We're trying to increase club participation and possibly start a program regarding tutoring and or just being there for struggling underclassmen. So that was from the students, nine through twelve, that they decided that this is what they wanted to come back and work on from October to March. After this, uh, leadership summit, um, a cross-section of those students met with Shannon and myself and came up with an action plan wherein they requested that twice a month they would meet in the library from seven thirty to eight o'clock to plan what that was gonna look like and what they were gonna do. So, uh, they, they actually had a meeting this morning, so I was, um, brought up to the speed with what they've done so far. And it aligns really closely with, uh, a slide that you're gonna see in a minute. Um, and it's really about how do we help students feel more connected? What does that look like? Eagle time, and I know I'll talk about eagle time in a minute, but eagle time is a really, really, um, amazing thing that under, uh, Mr. Sweeney was started and I'm love that it's still continuing and that the teachers are really responsive to it, as are the students, but there's always opportunities to improve. So we want to make sure that we're reaching out to students, not just academically, but through things like, um, fun activities, uh, that teachers are working with the students on. So I'll share more.
For some of our board members, I know you're new to everything. That was Brad Snyder that made the connection.
Yes.
Which was Mr. Snyder's son.
Sorry, thank you for pointing it out.
For a long time and he reached out to me and asked if I could make some connections and I embarrassed all the students in the student department. They made, they have a picture of me.
I think it's wonderful. I think it's great.
I think it's great. Excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Um, I'll get back to eagle time in a minute. I couldn't really figure out, I don't know that there's any ideal way for the flow to work. I don't know that I, it was kind of, uh, some insight into my brain is that I was thinking like, what are some other really cool things? So the leadership summit is really cool. What else is really student-led? So obviously, the student council, um, Alicia Cook, one of our teachers, heads up student council, they did a food drive for the holidays. They collected and organized food to be distributed to seventy local families. Not only did they have enough food for seventy local families, but they were able to donate hundreds of items to the food pantry along with a cash donation of a hundred and fifty dollars. So that was fantastic. Uh, another way that we're trying to reach out to the community is with, um, our freshman academy. Um, also, again, thanks to Mr. Sweeney and to our, um, school counselors. We have a freshman academy that ninth graders participate in. It's a period a day, it's the last period, it's a half-credit course and it serves three functions. So it provides students with some academic support because as freshmen, we know that that is a tough transition to make it from the, the middle school up here. So that helps build in that time that there's some academic support. It also, um, allows for us, there's a ten-week connections course that the students also participate in under Mr. Ferrara. And so that helps students, um, build those soft skills needed to be successful regardless of whether you're college-bound or workforce-bound. And then we also wanted to tie in, um, civic engagement and what can we do here in the community? And so one of the things, uh, that Amanda Burns and now Mr. Sanford and, uh, Ms. Burns' absence. Um, one of the things that they do is, uh, they reach out with the, um, senior center. And so this actually tied in the senior center as well as the CEA for, um, part of the freshman academy, they had tables that they decorated, our freshmen decorated tables for the senior center, for the, um, seniors to hand out candy to the students that came through for, um, trick or treat. Yeah, so that was a really, really, really cool thing that they did.
When I was a senior center supervisor, I was the supervisor at that senior center at one time. You guys probably don't know that. But everything I did with the school was always such a positive.
Positive for the seniors and for the students.
It was so, I mean, we used to do dance nights and the students would dance with the seniors and everything, so I'm really glad that the community is continuing with that.
Yes, I think it's vital. I think it's really, really important. Um, another thing that happens on a regular basis is the Community Service Club. That is, uh, under Rebecca Malloy, Meg Bubier, who assisted, um, in driving, um, a van and accompanying students on, uh, trips and Amanda Burns. Now, the picture on the right is from the fall, the students went to the Discovery Center and worked in the, um, gardens and the grounds outside raking and and helping prepare for, uh, the fall. And then on the left, that happened in December, again with the senior center, um, the Community Service Club went down, uh, in December and played games and had a breakfast and, uh, hung out for a few hours with the, um, seniors. So that was also super fun. The, I, I just wanna read the email. This was an email that was sent from the Discovery Center to Becky Malloy. And it said, "I checked on, I checked in on the garden staff last night to see how things went and they were absolutely over the moon about your group." "They were thrilled with how positive the experience was for them and for the club. "They especially loved watching them revisit their youth when they were visitors at the Discovery Center. "It always does their heart good to know this place has such a long history filled with happy memories." So getting back to, uh, what our guiding coalition plus came up with at the beginning of the year, we came up with two major initiatives. We came up with what we are calling soaring eagles and point to the positive. So soaring eagles was one of our ways to, uh, in a roundabout way, address the graduation rate through, uh, a tri-pronged approach. We wanna increase attendance, engagement and grades. And so we came up with this signage. We kicked it off with a, uh, um, a presentation in the auditorium for the beginning of the second quarter. And it's really about helping the, each class, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, feel like they are, uh, in it individually, but also collectively as a class. So individually, I can work on bettering myself by increasing my grades, um, attending eagle time, participating in spirit events, participate, winning pep rally events. Um, or I can increase my attendance. And so I'm doing that for me, but I'm also helping out my class. So we're gonna do, um, incentives on a, a marking period basis. So at the end of the second quarter, we'll compile. We tried to make it as, uh, little work as possible for us on our end to determine who gets all of the points, but I'm definitely gonna need some help with some key people for that. And then we're gonna do some sort of little reward as, as, um, as a marking period, like, hey, right now, the third quarter, the juniors have done, you know, gained, got the most points. But at the end of the year, you're working towards a trip. Okay, so it's a trip to Dorchester, I think, as I understand it, although I don't know that that's a hundred percent set in stone. But it is a trip that the winning class with the most spirit points, uh, will go on. Yeah, sure.
Cuz I'm backing off on you, Tom, cuz you've said these things before. So improve your overall, yep, improve your overall average, um, maintain your overall average, improve your overall average even if you aren't passing yet. I just, it looks like from what you have there, that we are encouraging students who can't make the honor roll. That's what I want to be sure we're doing with our students. We have a lot of students that can't make the honor roll, yeah, but they are doing their best. And I don't want a student to feel disappointed in themselves because they can't help in a different way. So I just wanna say I appreciate, I'm seeing some wordage that helps with this. But I again want to just make sure that we are doing the best for those students that are doing their best, even though they can't make the honor roll.
So my heart, you know, before I came here, I was at Bosse's and I was in all ed, so you're a hundred percent correct. I, I absolutely am cognizant of our students who are trying their best and their measure of success might not look like somebody else's measure of success. That doesn't make it any, uh, less important or any less, any, uh, less of a reason to celebrate. Yeah.
I appreciated the wording there. And I just wanna thank you for including that. And I just wanna make sure that our district is always doing that.
Thank you. Yes, duly noted.
But as long as she jumped in, I also, I know this has been a thing for me for a long time with the attendance and I appreciate how this was set up that it's not always perfect, that it started down there because students sometimes leave, leave from their parents taking them to doctor's appointments and then getting furious because they didn't get called up for perfect attendance. And it was again, so again, for how that has been set up over the years, I really appreciate that too because sometimes it's the parents that mess them up and.
And this was the hardest one for me because, you know, especially just coming out of last year, I mean, students, I mean, gosh, last year when, when students had to stay home, you know, and they didn't have necessarily the choice. I don't want to create that anxiety that, that you're talking about. And I, and perfection is never attainable. And I don't want that to be somebody's goal cuz you don't learn anything by being perfect. It's when you, it's when you, you know, a little rough on the edge.
Favorite saying, but what I really like, I'm just gonna piggyback from everyone else who's talking. I love that you, you, you list options here. Like you missed three your last, you get, so it, you may not hit perfect, but at least you still get some points for the effort.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And I really like that it's not just, if you miss three, you get three points, but there's no other options.
Points if you don't miss any.
Right, thank you. Or, or. Right, thank you. Or or if you uh maybe only earn one point grade by, but you were here full-time. So you're still earning four points for your.
It's just all well encouraging.
Yes, thank you. And that was, and this was, this was, like I said, this was Guiding Coalition Plus. I would love to, you know, say, woo, this came off, it actually did not.
Nicely done, though. This is great.
Thank you. And then the other aspect, and there's not any cool graphics yet for this, because we're really still, we've implemented some parts of it, and some of it is still getting up and running. Because the other part is uh point to the positive. So what we really want to, uh and this is where I talked about Eagle Time and Leadership Summit. We really want to increase that feeling of belonging and connectedness to the school community, not just for students, but for staff too. We we really are Whitney Point family and we want to encourage that. So how are we gonna achieve that? And really, I think through positive messaging. So we, I don't know if you were able to see that the TV in the lobby as you came in is working. And we're also getting the TV installed in the um cafeteria shortly. The mounting is up, and so I know that the TV will be following hopefully soon. Um, once those are fully operational, one of the things that we want to do is have um student-led. Um, interviews where it's kind of like person on the street and stopping and asking students in the hall. We've been asked, I know. Wacky questions, um you know, microwave gets, or microwave, a microphone gets thrust in your face and you're asked a question and and you have to answer it. And that's kind of fun. And so it's it's a a staff, it's student-driven, but it's questions of staff and questions of fellow students, and it's just meant to be fun. So that's one of the things that we want to get up on the TVs. And um another thing, and we haven't figured out the best way to do this yet. But we want there to be, like. I know it makes me sound old to the kids. It makes me sound old when I say Twitter, because nobody uses Twitter anymore. Yeah, or like, or God forbid you say the Facebook, but um but it's it's ideas where we are um. Providing a venue for these these positive shout-outs where it's either a teacher recognizing a student, and it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be academic-related. It doesn't have to be athletic-related. It can be for whatever reason. Um, or ideally, what I would love. Is that it then catches on and it's student-driven too, so that students are noticing other um things worthy of. Mentioning about other students. That, so that's kind of a, we're gonna grow that, that, that. I think will probably take some time, but that's something that I'm really interested in. Um, Fun Music Fridays, we've implemented where um. I've asked teachers to submit a songless playlist to me. And we have a a guest DJ in between periods, and students come to the office and guess who the staff member is. That's playing the songs. And then at the end of the day, out of the right guesses, I randomly choose. And they get like some, I have a whole bunch of like five-dollar gift cards for either Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's in my, in my um drawer. But I saved money last week because nobody guessed. It was Mr. Jones, and nobody guessed the music teacher, which was really, really funny to me.
Uh, like that, or are you getting a lot?
Yeah, we're just starting, we're, last week was our first official week. Starting, we've had other um Music Fridays, but this was the first time that it was actually. Um, one staff member playing all of the songs, although I have to say, before, the day before um break. We had um staff members come and sing and and and, oh my gosh, no, no, no. If if you guys, and I'm sure you're all aware, this is not going to be news anymore. Mike Hakes has a beautiful voice. Literally brought me to tears. He sang, he sang Blue Christmas, and it was. It was, it was beautiful.
The kids like it?
Yeah, and we had some, we had some students. Yes, the boy would be great.
All right, I'm in.
But we had um, we had, and we had students sing too, and so that was, it was really fun. So but this was our first, this past Friday was our first uh staff-led um guest DJ. We also um announced student birthdays um on the announcements every morning, just as a, unless a student requests that we don't. And we have had students say, please don't. But otherwise, we uh um announce student birthdays. Uh, and then we celebrate student and staff acco- accomplishments, like Mr. Nardochi just got his masters. And so Ms. Burdick put that on the announcements to congratulate him, which I thought was nice. Um. And tokens of appreciation for staff at the beginning of the year and at Christmas, Deb and I um made sure that everyone in the building got a little something from us.
That's nice.
And thank you. And then random incentives. So tomorrow we'll have Eagle Time. And I will randomly, I'll, at at the end of the day tomorrow, I'll look at the attendance list and randomly choose. Um, a name and give them a gift card for going to Eagle Time, because that's what we want to, we want to do. We want to increase participation in Eagle Time also. I know I'm over my fifteen minutes and I apologize.
Oh, really good stuff. I'm excited.
I asked um Mrs. Belanger to submit to me, because I don't think that our transitional skills students need. Um, the spotlight too. And so they do, and Randy does such incredible work with them. So I asked her to send me, she said, "How many sides do you want?" And I said, "One." And she was like, "That's gonna be really, really hard." But they do, they do such great work. So her students made darnet dolls for um the uh. It's Raining Lemonade organization, which I saw that Miss Sexton um remarked on in her accommodations, and that they went to the Meals on Wheels recipients. I know tomorrow's Eagle Time, our Community Service Club is working with the Transitional Skills students to also continue making some darnet dolls. So that'll be nice. Um, they cook every week. They make Thanksgiving meals. They run the coffee cart every morning. Um, we also have a Transitional Skill student that's being employed in our cafeteria, and he's loving it, and he's doing an amazing job. So that's really wonderful. And then they go on field trips and uh they go to Greg's once a month to buy their supplies for their coffee cart. Uh, so they're doing a lot, a lot of really great, great, important things. And then I know this is hard to read, but I wanted to mention our uh highlights of our Regents exams. And really, I mean, obviously, there's a ton of information on here, and you can go to the um our school report card. But I wanted to point out, because I think that there was a fear, at least I know that it was in my son's high school. And other high schools locally, that there was, there was a real fear of how did, how did we do on our Regents exams? And so, my glasses, all right, so. I did want to point out. Um. That for our algebra exam, so that yellow line is the state, how New York State performed. And of course, we want proficiency is either, depending on the exam, is either a four and a five or a three, four and a five. So um the yellow line is how students throughout the state performed, and then the blue line is how. Uh, our students performed. And I'm only looking at that last column, so I'm really only highlighting how we compared to the state. So with our Algebra One regions, which is on the left-hand side there, as a district, we had sixty-five percent of our students um achieve proficiency. And statewide, it was sixty-six percent. So we were, we were pretty close to um the state level proficiency. However, in living environment, uh ninety-four percent of our students in our district. Um, were deemed proficient and only seventy-four percent throughout the state.
That's always more important than that.
No bias, right? Just like books and library, yeah. So on the, the next slide, I have our uh ELA results. And seventy-eight percent of our students in the district, oh no, sorry, it just looks the same, right? That's ELA on the left. Yeah. Um, oh, sorry, did I not, sorry. No, that's okay. So uh seventy-eight percent of our students um were proficient. And statewide, eighty-one percent.
That is wonderful.
Geometry, sixty-three percent of our students were proficient compared with fifty-three percent of the state. So that was also an area of celebration. So, sure.
So I just to, this again, our fear, the Mr. Burdick, these are after these kids have had. Complete disruption. We were at home for long periods of time, then they were back in, forth they home here or something. A third of our students were not here at all during that.
Right.
Great beating up to this. So I mean, that, I just think it's, it just makes it all the more.
That's why I'm saying it's impressive. I'm, I'm overwhelmed with these. I'm very excited.
And and also, I I know that I've said this throughout, but this, this has one million percent nothing to do with either of us standing here. But lots to do with somebody sitting in the audience. So I'm, I'm.
Presenting uh data from when he was in the visiting.
And I'm, and I'm, it's my pleasure to do so.
Yeah, that's great, though. It's wonderful. This is very good.
And if you look at the, and I really just kind of somewhat randomly, I mean, not randomly, but I just, this was just kind of a cross-section of of results. But if you go on the website, there's really m- more to celebrate too. So. Like Algebra Two, eighty-six percent. Compared to sixty-five percent of the state.
Yeah. Well, even with the, they, they had this big report where they showed the school districts where they had like. On a card and all this stuff, even New York, even Whitney Point, we came in, like, we were in the top half of the fifty percent, even for Brook County. So it was nice that we were at the bottom.
Yeah, absolutely. So certainly always room to grow, but still places to celebrate. And then for me, I think I only have a couple more slides. Um, uh going along with um. You know, uh wanting to reach out to the community, um wanting to provide opportunities for students. The Seal of Civic Readiness is something that we are also um undertaking. And it is an approved pathway for our students for graduation. So that's really, really important. So it's a, one of the four plus one. It's the, um, you know, they fulfill their requirements with their coursework, they're getting their credits. And passing um a series of, you know, Regents exams or assessments. And then this is another, getting the Seal of Civic Readiness is another approved pathway. So it's just like, you know, our students who get CDOs. Our students who get the CTE credit, all of our humanities, there's different pathways, but the Seal of Civic Readiness is another approved pathway. And that's something that we're exploring, because it's super, super important. And I think that it's really beneficial to our students. So we're looking to get that up and running also. And then the last thing um is attendance. And and this is somewhat, obviously, it's skewed. Uh, because last year, like I said earlier, lots of students were absent for lots of reasons beyond their control. However, I would maintain that there were students who were chronically absent. Because they, for a whole variety of reasons, right? Not just because they had to stay home because they were quarantined, but it also because of of factors that led to them feeling disengaged. So our numbers this year, I mean, on our left-hand side, we're looking at fourteen hundred. And so the matrix is different, so that we're looking at nine hundred. And I know it's obviously a partial year. Um, but we are at far, far fewer attendance or absences um per month. However, I say cautious optimism, but still cause for concern, because for me, I'm looking at that, and I still see that September, October, November, December. I'm noticing, yes, it's at a a reduced number, but we are looking at an upward trajectory. So that is definitely something that doesn't um escape us. And is an area that we are, you know, monitoring and and continuing to. To encourage students to come to school, which is why all of the Eagle Time stuff, the Point to the Positive, the Soaring Eagles. Those are all ways that we're trying to help reach out to our students so that they feel like they belong and like they're connected.
So quick question on the absence. I always find uh when you're looking at graphs, trends are really important. So I'm going to assume that as you guys are looking at this, and as you mentioned, it appears that it's increasing month over month. If you recognize there's, let's say, twenty students that have a trend of they're often absent. Is the school getting involved and engaging to find out, is there something they, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Just thought I would add, I assume that.
And and that's a really, but that, and that's a really important point, because that's one of the um focal points of our PPS meetings, you know, that, that, that really is. Are we making the home visits? Are we calling in if there, if we need to? Are we working with all the various stakeholders to find out what is the root cause for the student not coming to school? And that's certainly happening. So for us, when we talk about improving our daily attendance rate, that's kind of up and running. What we want to do is keep the kids who are in school coming to school.
Okay.
Which is why so much of our initiatives are focusing on kind of incentivized type uh uh events.
The kids that are coming, but then also looking at the trends of the kids.
Yeah.
They're falling short to find out there's anything we can do.
Yeah.
To help them. Okay.
Absolutely.
Good to know.
And so with that, quick, short ten minutes. It's only been ten minutes, right? Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Deb, because there are um a final few slides that are really about uh celebrations and what's happening.
Okay, so I get the fun stuff. And I don't know how to use this. So I'm going in the wrong direction. I apologize ahead of time.
There you go.
So we um were here for the National Honor Society induction ceremony. Um, Ben Allerson is the advisor. Um, and he does an excellent, excellent job. And the honor speaker that evening was Barbara Welsh, who's very well revered. Amongst the student body, um and the staff as well. Um. I'm glad to see that she's on the agenda tonight for long-term sub. Um, but it was a great night to watch them all be inducted. Um, and Barbara's speech was um very inspirational. And very witty. And um then we came back to the library to have a small reception. And celebrate more on a personal level with the uh the friends and the family to honor and recognize all of the students' achievements. And then the Drama Club um is, uh Ken Jones is the advisor, and this year's play was crucible. I don't know how many of you were able to come and see the play. Um, I sat there the entire night watching that play, thinking. Holy cow, you could really see the hard work these kids had put in. Because first of all, it was tons of dialogue. And then not familiar uh form of speech. And um also uh some tough topics that are involved in the play.
And one of the things some of the kids said was that they found a lot of the topics that they had to think about for the crucible. They were relevant to today.
Yes.
And so they really got into the play.
Yes, thought-provoking, very thought-provoking. And like I said, they did an amazing job. They really did. I sat there in all, all of them that night. And then the Winter Concert, which was done by uh Mr. Johnson, uh Ms. Pullen. Again, another amazing night, um holiday-themed music throughout the evening to showcase all of the students' talents. Um, whether it was uh playing in a musical instrument or singing. And then again, uh Molly and I were taken a little bit a back and caused for a little bit of teariness at the end there. Because apparently, which we didn't know until that evening, um this is a tradition on the left. You'll see where they invite anybody and everybody from the audience to come up on stage and perform the last number together with. Them all, um which was from the Handel's Messiah. And it was just beautiful. And you could tell the depth of the meaning to everybody in the room and those that were on stage. It brought us to tears. And then um Molly's already told you about Eagle Time, but again, this is a way um that we're. Uh, really working hard at making all the students feel very connected and feel like they belong. And also promote a sense of community, because uh they get to uh mix with upperclassmen and lowerclassmen. And really get to enjoy each other's company um without any ties to academics. And lastly, the Holiday Rally, which was a lot of fun, but also there were periods of time where Molly and I went. Couple of the games were a little, the the kids got competitive. It was good competition. But I was like, okay, let's hope nobody gets hurt. But it, again, it was born out of uh a challenge. Ms. Cook um took the lead on this one and created a challenge to the student body. Um, the classes that could come up with two hundred canned uh items could, it would, you know, they, we could have the holiday rally. So they all rose to the occasion, and then um I think we were in the gym for about, what, an hour?
That's great.
Yeah, and they did various games. And as you can tell, they had a lot of fun, and it was fun to watch them have a lot of fun. So.
It's really nice to see all the engagement and all the new things that you guys are offering for the students and staff. I love it.
It's nice to to get away from the academics and and just to get to enjoy them as individuals.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very nice. Nicely done. Yeah.
Very nice. Nicely done. Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Um, may have a motion. I heard Kathy and Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Retirement resignation for Linda Lindy Thorne, cleaner effective February third, twenty twenty-three. May have a motion. And Tom and Chris. Any questions or comments?
I don't.
I, I have a comment. I have a lot of respect for people that take pride in their work. And I don't know if there's a better person you could ever say that takes more pride in their work. So it, it just. I know sometimes it might be hard if you're not a person that takes a lot of pride in your work being around people like that, but. For all that she's done here and, and the heart that she put into it, I will just. Very, very happy and I'm glad that she's able to retire.
Yeah, her letter was very.
So Lindy Thorne was hired as a cleaner February fourth, two thousand and three. During her almost twenty years with the district, Lindy has been an extremely dedicated employee and unbelievably hard worker. And a committed leader in her department. She always helps wherever needed and notably really stepped up during the pandemics early times with food distribution. And later even higher with, uh, cleaning expectations. Lindy knows the high school building like the back of her hand, has a very high standard for how the building should be cared for. And always takes pride in her work, which truly shows. Whenever there are visitors to our district, they almost always comment on how beautiful the high school building is cared for. I personally have witnessed the great care and mentorship that Lindy shows to people who want to learn and learn, and learn from her in particular. Um, she's close to many, many people on her high school staff and a source of much appreciated humor. There's really, you know, I. Unbelievable shoes, Bill, um, she will testify all.
That's great. Absolutely.
And it's funny because it's. When you think of people in the district, she is one of those people that you see and you just see the district.
Yeah.
I mean, it just.
Any other comments from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? We are going to move to the agenda. Except Julie Lamoralea's resignation from the position of assistant principal of the Whitney Point T F yoga Riverside Academy. Effective at eleven fifty-nine P M, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. In order to concurrently appoint Mrs. Lamoralea as literacy interventionist teacher. May have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second. Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Lucky to have her.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Um, going back to the agenda. Approve the appointment of Leah Friedman, provisional typist, effective January eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second. Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? This is to fill the position in the C E A, correct? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Brittany Fleming, full-time teacher's aide, effective January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. May have a motion? Thank you, Kathy.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments?
This, um, Brittany's moving her part-time to full-time, uh, she's filling one of the positions, uh, that from the person who moved to being a teaching assistant.
Gotcha. Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve the appointment of Tiffany Quail, full-time teacher's aide, effective January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, subject to fingerprint clearance. May have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy and Tiana. Any questions or comments?
And this is another position that was vacated by a person who moved to be a teaching assistant.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, moving back to the agenda. Um, approve the three-year probationary appointment of Julie Lamoralea, literacy interventionist teacher. In the reading teacher tenure area, effective January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at twelve A M. Um, and since I have read a lot of the next paragraph, I think you guys can read it for yourself. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Barbara Welsh, long-term substitute English teacher, effective February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, well.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second. Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, approve the following twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three spring coaching recommendations. Boys baseball, varsity, Steve Samson, junior varsity, position is open, and modified Craig Richards. Golf, varsity, Matt Poyer. Girls softball, varsity, David Horton, junior varsity, Thomas Crowley, modified Ethan Lee. Boys lacrosse, varsity, Bill Davis, modified Trevor Erb. Girls lacrosse, varsity, Danielle Montesano, modified Samantha Driscoll. Track and field, varsity, Murphy Hayes and Jessie Hartley, modified Valerie Priscut and Troy Rounds. May have a motion? I have Kathy and.
Correct.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't quite sure. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Passed my bedtime, apparently. Um, approve the following twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three extracurricular advisor. Um, for science club, Jean Jordan. Thank you, Tiana. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
We're not really sure what happened here, but somehow there was a paperwork that didn't get to us, but.
I was gonna say, because there's been, they've been meeting and they've had, there's been a science club and it just.
Got it now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Unpaid leave of absence for Sarah Arnold, gym teacher, effective February seventh through February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. May have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second.
A second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, that's it for the agenda. That brings us to superintendent's update.
Um, just a quick update. Um, we've had a couple of committees working, um, district-wide. One is, um, uh, belonging and inclusion committee, um, where we are really trying to take a deep dive to look at. Um, what ways that we can improve to make sure that every child feels safe, supported. Um, and respected within our, in our school district. Um, so we, um. As part of that work, we've done, there's been some equity walks happening, uh, look, looking throughout our district. Um, we are about to embark on, um, meeting with some focus groups. We, our committee is going to now. Um, broaden to in, invite some more students and community members to our work. To make sure that, um, we are really listening to all the voices that really matter, um, related to this, um. And we, you know, we're toying with some different ideas. So I just, just to be on the lookout for, for upcoming things and events. And, um, maybe some additions to our curriculum, uh, to make sure that we're addressing. These issues in a really meaningful way that really resonates with students. Um, also, just for your information, um, the joint dinner, uh, is going to be in March this year, not in January, it's usually in January. So, um, it's slated, I guess they're still working on the date, but it's the latter part of March and it's going to be held in Windsor. So we'll give you more information about that. Um, we also, um. Are, um, having, I, I just wanted, I guess, take a moment to thank, um, all of the members of the youth club. And representatives for other groups who are interested in making some changes and initiating some programs in our school. Who've met with us and are working with us to try and think about things differently and figure out how we can, um. Communicate better, really, I think is the issue, because I think there has been a lot of, um. Assumptions that, that the school's always going to say no and that, that, um. That it's not even worth asking and there's so many roadblocks. And I think a lot of that comes from maybe some things that historically have happened. And then, um, getting tired of just, you know, asking the questions. So I just want to say thank you for those people who have, have started to meet with us and work with us. And, um. Murphy Hayes and Zach and I just want to communicate to everybody who can listen to say that, you know, we want to start from a place of, let's figure out how we can work it out. There are things that the school has to deal with. We do have a lot of rules that we have to follow, but, um, start from a place where, from, we need to work together. We all have the same goals. We need to figure out how we can, you know, meet everybody's needs. So thank you to everybody who's been working with us on that.
That brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Please keep in mind the things that are read before the first opportunity. Um, that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak this evening? Okay, um, that brings us to Board of Education comments. I just want to say thank you to everybody who has been working so hard. Um, thank you for your presentation this evening. Um, it was also really nice for the Brumteigabosse's, um, to see things in a different way. Because when we see the same thing year after year after year presented in the same way. Um, sometimes it's very easy to. Not really think as deeply about it as when things are different. So, um, I certainly appreciated the change in format for that. Um.
I will just piggyback what you said. Um, the Bosse's presentation was fabulous. It was different from the years that we've had and appreciated very much. Um, and also I really appreciate your presentation too. It's just, uh, the dedication. I can feel it. Just from you speaking, both of you. And, um, it was wonderful to hear and the time, I know everything you put into it was fantastic. Thank you so much for that.
Yes, I'll add too. Um, having now the high school, all the schools that have presented. I know selfishly, sometimes it's, it's tough during the day, but when I come to these meetings and see how positive and how inclusive the schools are right now. And what they're striving for, it, it just makes my heart sore. It's, it's just such a great thing to be sitting up here. While you're doing all the work. So thank you for all the schools and all the presentations that were done. It just makes me really happy.
Uh, just want to say thank you for all that you do.
You need to have popcorn day. I'm sorry I sat here and drank my popcorn to my whole board meeting.
She did not share.
I didn't share, but you know. I have, like, sometimes you have to have the happy moments in your life, right? So I appreciate that and I appreciate everything everybody's doing.
I don't usually require a microphone. Um, so real quick, Zach, how are we doing on the capital project?
Yeah, we're doing great. Um, again, it's out for bid right now. We're hoping. Um, it's been closed up and we're gonna go through review bids on the twenty-sixth. Uh, then on the Friday, the following special meeting, uh, shortly after just to, uh, award those bids.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And Joanne, I just want to thank you. I know I reach out to you often. And I think you are doing a fantastic job with your responses. I know that a lot is on the shoulders of the administrative. Team and I think you guys do an amazing job. And unfortunately, I think your roles are often overlooked on how much you guys do. So I want to thank you. And I'd also like to thank you guys for your presentation tonight. I am very excited about the numbers. And seeing, um, that you are, uh, really putting a focus on the key goals that Joanne has presented to us earlier in the year. So I think you guys are doing a great job. I'm excited. I love all the new things that are coming down the pipeline. I was also impressed with the T R A, uh, presentation as well as the C E A. I, I, I'm just. Very, very excited about all the positive things. So I think it's great to come to these meetings. Because we're people of the community and we share with everyone all the great things that our school district is doing. There's a lot of negativity out there right now. So I think it's really important. While looking at opportunities for improvement to still celebrate all the great things. So nice job. Thank you.
Don't forget legislative breakfast is coming up. I can't remember the date, but I know it's in February.
I thought you were saying you were buying a bag for everybody. You don't have enough for everybody.
I can manage that. I can actually manage that.
Yeah, you're really doctor. You should be bringing it.
But, uh, you know, it's our opportunity, if we have the availability to go, I mean, it's our, our opportunity to talk to our legislators and our assemblymen. And make sure that we have our voices heard. So that is coming up in February. So.
I think it's first, uh, Friday.
Yeah, I think.
I'm supposed to know these things, Zach, but it's on my calendar.
And then, uh, Zach, you want to give them a ballpark timetable and what they might have to meet?
The prize be early February, but yeah, well, like, you know, again, uh, we're gonna open those bids twenty-six and it takes a few days to get them.
I'm anxious to find out how everything plays out with the bids, the prices. Do we have to, you know, or, right, do we have to make some additional modifications? As we know, costs have increased substantially. So I just, you know, eager to find out how it plays out. Thank you for staying on topic.
Um, I just, I, and I did want to say about all three of your presentations, um, we've all said that we appreciate the positivity. But. Many of you, well, Mr. Sweeney probably knows, many, 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 many years ago. Um, we, the board requested that we needed to start seeing some presentations. From the schools, the different groups, because all too often, all we saw was the negative things, the problems, the issues. And the whole point in having these presentations is for us to see the awesome things that are happening. And for us, when sometimes all we really do hear about is the negative things. For us to be able to hear from the young lady who spoke today about how important Bosse's was and how much it's affecting her. To how you've changed the wording on, on certain things so that they're positive goals. They're not, you're being punished if you don't excel. Because as we've all said, not every student. Is a phenomenal, high honor roll student. But they all have skills that are worth, um. Developing. And so thank you guys for making all of your presentations to be so positive. And really remind us of what a great district we have. Because I talked to other people in other districts and, and while we have our problems. Overall, it's, we're pretty lucky up here.
I think so too. I second that. Good job, Zach.
So thank you all. And thank you, I mean, you guys too. I mean, you always make sure that we get the good stuff. Except for Chris, who doesn't make sure we all get popcorn. But you know, that's just another thing. Um, I'm assuming we do not have a need for another executive session. Okay, then we are going to adjourn the public meeting at eight thirteen P M. May I have? Thank you, Chris and Kathy.
Thank you guys.
All in favor?